I'm going to call the meeting to order. We could all rise for the Pledge of Ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Just to make note, as we call the roll tonight, Mrs. Grimm is absent tonight, as well as Mr. Kofelt. And with that, we'll entertain the motion for the approval of the minutes from our last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any questions from anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And with that, we'll move on to our education report.
And this evening, we have Mrs. Yolanda Williams and I think Mr. Voorhees and some... Oh, we've got all the reading specialists, okay. I wasn't sure if Brenda was coming or who was coming. So, so nice to have all of our reading specialists, and we're going to take a look at our guided reading program.
One, I'd like to thank Mrs. Brenda Novak. She's our fifth grade teacher. She opened up her classroom to us and her students, so she is featured in the video. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Voorhees and Ms. Ellis, also our reading specialist Linda Randina, Mara Lundstrom, and Rebecca Hutchins for all their support with this. Now, I have you actively engaged in this activity. You have a worksheet in front of you. If you can find your worksheet, your template, because I want you to actively engage into the presentation. So, what I would like you to do is reflect on what you observed from the teacher, as well as the students. And there's a place at the bottom for your questions. What I'll do is I'm going to pause in the middle, so that you can take time to reflect, and then I'll start it back up again.
I teach fifth grade, ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies, and I'm going to discuss the role of the guided reading teacher. During guided reading, the goal is to have a lesson that has explicit instruction for the children, focusing on a skill or strategy. The goal is to teach the children to talk to text in a small group setting, and they have to be explicitly taught how to do that. So, whatever we're doing in class in the mini lesson, whatever that focus is, you bring it back when you're in guided reading, and then you explicitly teach the lesson. And for some kids, you might have to go into detail and give them practice with whatever the skill or strategy is. With another group of learners, you might take whatever's happening in the mini lesson and dig a little bit deeper. So, the beauty of guided reading is that it's differentiated. The group of students that you're working with, you're working with a group of students around, a group of students around the same level, at the same instructional level. Your texts can vary. You usually go for a challenging text, so that you can support them through the text. Sometimes you can do a little bit of an easier text, if your goal is to dig deeper with the text. So, you're doing, you're providing explicit instruction to a small group of students, and the beauty of the small group is that children are a little bit more relaxed when you're in the small group, and they are more willing to discuss and become involved with the small group. So, that would be an awesome thing for kids, if they are willing to kind of let their hair down a little bit and share their thoughts, instead of in the group with the whole class, because a lot of kids don't want to do that.
Okay. You received a little bit of lip, a little bit of confidence, when we met last time. So, my friends who are down here, I'm going to catch you up a little bit. I am so glad you went to that first page. Tell me why you went to that first page.
The rock plays in the home.
Yes. Did you realize that sometimes, even in something like this, you would have a table of contents? So, why do you think the author, the author is Deanna Anastasia, why do you think Deanna would give us a table of contents?
Because she's listening to water and using her phone.
Yeah. Maybe we don't want to read every poem, so we can definitely go to our table of contents. Table of contents, it's a great place to start. So, look at the poems and see what poem interests us. So, when we look at them, we can go, oh. For me, I love tsunamis, and I know you guys write, not that I love what happens with them, but I love they're very interesting. You are at computer right now, you're working on natural disasters, right? So, this actually, you're going to find out that poems can help you acknowledge certain things as well. You went through, last time you saw a poem, and then everybody wanted to read and share. So, I want you to go back to the poem that you picked up for, and I want you to reread it to yourself. I want you to, I want you to look through there, and this is the key thing right now, you're looking for figurative language. We've talked about figurative language quite a bit. Highlight, I have highlighters for you, my friends. Highlight any figurative language that you see and that you're comfortable talking about. Some of the figurative language is a little bit of new learning for us. So, you're going to read your poems to yourself, find your figurative language, and be willing to talk about it. Today, we're going to experience a couple different poems, and we're going to see if we can find the author's message, if the author has a message. We're going to discuss theme, and we're going to look at, can we get a vibe for the poem? Do we know the mood of the poem? Does it have an angry feeling, a sad feeling, a happy feeling? Now, we know this topic that we're discussing is the ocean, and we had a question, why is the hurricane poem in there? So, I asked you to go through your poem, so we're going to try to answer that question as well. But, right now, I ask everybody to read their poems and find one piece of figurative language. So, that will take care of our first part of the lesson, of identifying the figurative language. So, who wants to tell us first? What did you find? Tell us your poem.
I think, um, into the hurt.
Oh, you did so. You were curious. So, you're following up with what Ms. En said, curious about that. Okay. And what figurative language did you find in your poem?
I, um, I, I say hyperbole.
Hyperbole?
I can say.
That's okay.
It says into a mighty monster.
Into a mighty monster. Now, what jumps out at you right away is mighty monster? Does that jump out at anybody else? What would that be, an example of a mighty monster?
Oh, alliteration.
Alliteration, so alliteration. And mighty monster, you're saying that's hyperbole because it's an exaggeration. So, can a hurricane really be a mighty monster? No, it's trying to make a point. What point is the author making by using those words? What do you think, Amber?
That they can be dangerous.
That they can be dangerous. So, mighty monster's letting us know that it can be dangerous. One more time, say it again. Girls, I want you to tune into this part.
It's, normally it's a series of huge vicious waves that can cause destruction on the sea.
Okay. There's two reasons I want you to zero in on what she said. Did you see that her voice was a little sing-songy? It was supposed to be sing-songy. Remember we talked about, we're talking about rhythm next week? Later on, I mean, the next week. So, you paid attention to the rhythm. You can feel the poem has a little bit of a flow to it. And so, as the reader, we need to read it over and over and over again to feel the flow. When we feel the flow of the poem, then we're going to be able to dig a little bit deeper to understand the message, perhaps the purpose of the poem.
It was, so, yeah. Living coral latch on, and the reef grows and grows, it's a glorious home for the creatures alike. A reef is a rare store under the sea, where coppers and turtles and clams like to be. The coral is fragile, we must treat it with care, don't pollute or touch it when we're swimming on it.
Ah, she did. Well, you know, it was sing-songy, it wasn't. I like it very much. You did a good job. Also, I'd like to, sometimes when we read, we make mistakes, we go back and fix them. That's what a good reader does. You had a flow to your poem. There was a rhythm to it when you were reading it. What did you notice? What made you, the reader, feel the rhythm? What do you think?
It was very good.
So, we had some words that rhymed. Very good. Did you notice anything else?
There was some alliteration.
There was some alliteration in there, so that made it a little bit more fun. Anything else? When I was looking at it, and this is one thing we're going to talk about next week, but I want to chat with you guys today. The poem has a pattern. So, I want you to pick up your pencil with me, and I want you to follow, and I'm going to teach you something about poems. If they, be familiar, you might talk about it with your teaching lesson.
I want you to pause, so that you can take time to reflect on it. The nice part about it, this is going on in all of your elementary classrooms, and I don't want to give you all the details, but I really want you to think about what you're seeing, and how much work is put into the lesson, and how much the teacher's engaging the students. So, this is guided reading, so this is a fifth grade classroom, but this takes place in K through five. And I want to show you, because you don't always have a chance to come into the building and see what's going on, and all your support, so we wanted to definitely show you this to you. For the second part, and it's just about over, she's going to show you what happens while the teacher is doing this, because that was one of the questions, and that's a concern. So, what's going on in the rest of the classroom when the teacher's at the table with the students doing mini lessons, guided reading lessons?
But we're going to refresh our memory. It's not so good right now. Coral reefs, underwater, under warm, under warm waves, where the children are swimming under magnificent structures, growing and brimming. We know swimming and brimming, growing. So, I want you to put an A at the end of that. A lowercase a after swimming, and a lowercase a after brimming. We're going to look for a pattern in our poems. So, we're going to see, is, do they all do A at the end? Or are we going to see that our poem changes up? Is there a pattern? We're going in A, B, C order now. Do you connect, direct, rhyme with swimming and brimming?
No.
No? Do they rhyme with poem and brimming? No, so we need to label it as C. You're having it on hold, but you already tell us more.
So, if you guys want to share what else goes on with the guided reading. Well, outside of Brenda teaching at her table, she would also have several different things going on, set up for all the students in a focused learning setting. There will be students who are working on their word study, so they've got their sorts, and they're all working at a level that's been individualized to them. They're going to be doing...
Independent reading, and doing some kind of response to their independent reading, something that they, they usually are writing in journals, or they're asking questions, or they're doing something, so that they are accountable for that independent reading time, even though they're reading a book that they chose.
And the last piece that we didn't see in the video, or maybe we mostly, I don't know, is that if they complete all of these activities, they don't just move on to busy work. They, she has specific activities that are very focused for them to move on to. So, there's never just busy worksheets or fluff activities going on. It's always very direct and very focused. Do you have any questions?
How often do they, does the teacher get to the individual groups in a cycle? Is it like once a cycle, or?
It depends on the level of the students. So, the students that are on a higher reading level see her less often, because they have more independence, and students who are struggling and who are below grade level see her every day.
We can certainly wait 30 seconds for your hard work.
Oh, it's okay, because if, please come to our literacy night, because this will be perfect, because this is our, hopefully for our literacy night as well. And after our literacy night, we will post it, so that it will be a reference for parents, so they can begin to learn about more things that we're doing inside the classroom. So, I want you to be able to see it in its entirety. So, we'll actually send you the clip, so you can take time to kind of run through it as well. And feel free at any time to come and visit, so you can really see what's going on in the classroom. A lot of hard work is taken place in the classrooms. So, thank you, and we will, please come to our literacy night, October 23rd.
Thank you, reading specialists, for coming out. Mara, Rebecca, and Linda, thank you.
Actually, I don't have any public comments left, so we're going to move on to, and just to verify that that's accurate. Okay. We're going to move on to the report of the superintendent.
I recommend that you approve the professional staff items as submitted.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the support staff items as submitted.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions from anyone? All those in favor?
I recommend that you approve the student-teacher assignments as submitted.
I just want to amend the motion that we approve the rest of A for personnel. Need a second.
A second, ma'am.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Moving on to business, I recommend that you authorize the administration to enter into the educational services agreement with foundations as presented.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Are there any questions from anyone? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I recommend that you authorize the administration to enter into a tuition agreement with foundations as presented.
So moved. Motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
I recommend that you approve the change order EC dash 001 for the Potsgrove Middle School Secure Vestibule Project as presented.
So moved. Can someone tell me what panic hardware means?
I'll let Mike tell you, but it has to do with the door push. Go ahead.
When we designed the secure vestibule at the middle school, the outer set of doors on the existing vestibule were remaining in place, and they were to be retrofitted with a device, a small electric motor inside the panic hardware, that retracts the device to allow the, the unit to work through our card access system. After the door hardware installer started working on the doors, they discovered that the panic hardware that was installed on those four doors was retrofitted from a 48-inch panic device to a 36-inch panic device, and the retrofit motor would not fit into that retro, that device that was modified during original construction. So, we had to go through a change order process to replace the entire panic device for the proper size, and not the one that had been modified during the 1999 construction.
Okay, I'm still, just to clarify one thing, but I think I got it. So, panic is like, we have an emergency?
No, no.
We're not panicking?
We're not panicking. It's called a crash bar, panic device. It's a panic bar, so that when you, it's the, the Y device that goes from one side of the door to the other, that allows immediate egress through the door, unlocking it. Thank you. No problem.
Just a second. When's the expected completion of this?
That is completed.
This part, okay.
The entire project is completed. I believe we have one of the final pay apps on the board agenda for tonight. We have our certificate of occupancy from Upper Potsgrove Township. We're just waiting on the final pay application from the general contractor. It was a very smooth process through the summer. Very good, good project for us.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
I recommend that you approve the payment of invoices listed as presented.
Motion and a second. Any questions from anyone? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the payment of invoices listed for the high school renovation project as presented.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I recommend that you approve the conference attendance as presented.
So moved. Motion and a second. Any questions from anyone on the board? All those in favor? Yep. I was going to take us to our discussion items for tonight.
And this evening, I know we put something in your packet to explain to you about our fund balance, but I'll let Mr. Nester kind of review that information with you.
Back in May, I had presented a scenario to you regarding fund balance planning, how to use surplus funds that were projected to be available as part of the fiscal year end, June 30, 2014. We've now completed the, just about completed the audit, and have the, a more precise number than what was discussed back in May. At that point in time, there was a lot of accruals that were not received yet, so at that point in time, I had projected approximately a $200,000 surplus. The actual surplus has come in just over $700,000, and it provided some information on what contributed to that additional surplus. That additional $500,000 represents slightly under 1% of our overall budget. In total, the surplus is just slightly over 1% of our overall budget. We typically use 2% as a benchmark to try and stay within one way or the other. So, we felt we were well within that, that very, potential variance. However, we do need to determine how best to use those funds. And certainly, this is the board's discretion as to how to use the funds most appropriately. However, in looking at our recent history and the amount of money that has been expended from our capital reserve fund over the last year, and the fact that we need to maintain a strong capital reserve fund going forward to fend off future tax increases, because we're going to be using most of our borrowing capacity with the high school project, our recommendation is that the board authorize a transfer of $700,000 to our capital reserve fund. In addition to that, and this isn't a transfer or use of fund balance at all, but because we had a surplus this year, we did not need to use some of the money that we had set aside and planned to use for our Peasers, to defray our Peasers' costs this year. And I'm asking that the board provide authorization to recommit that money, so that we can, we have a little bit more money to defray the retirement rate increases in the next few years as they continue to jump. So, with that being said, I'll entertain any questions or concerns that you may have.
I just had a question about, and I'm very happy that we stay under budget. I appreciate the staying under the budget. Historically, what has been our budget surplus, like, over the last couple of years?
It varies from year to year. Several years ago, when we implemented our internal service fund for our self-funded healthcare plan, we had in excess of a million dollars that we transferred into that fund to help stabilize it and get it, provide the base, so that we had some reserves there. So, it's, that million dollars is on the high edge, I'd say, and, you know, $400,000 or $500,000 was on the low edge. We typically do come in under budget. It's very difficult to project exactly what's going to transpire 12 months in advance of it actually happening. So, yeah, but I'd say somewhere in the, in the 400 to $1 million range is typical.
I have a written statement that I've prepared on this subject. I hate doing written statements, because, well, when you're reading, it sounds canned, and I like to speak more extemporaneously, but I think this subject is extremely important, and I wanted to make sure that I get it right. So, I beg your forgiveness for the reading. Last year, the board was presented with a 950K budget surplus, and it accepted the recommendation of the administration to keep that money, splitting it between the Peasers' reserve and the capital reserve funds. Though there were a lot of factors that resulted in that surplus, the most important one in my mind was the 2.79% tax increase that was passed by the board in June of the previous year. The decision to split the money between the Peasers and capital reserves was made just before the election, that saw myself, Matt Alexander, and Kelly Crist elected to the board. In our first meeting in December of last year, I suggested that we reverse that decision and either refund the money to the taxpayers, or keep it in the general fund, to reduce the need for a tax increase in the coming year. I was informed that we couldn't take the money out of the capital fund now that it was so committed. However, after a bit of probing, I did discover that we could use money in the capital fund to make an interest payment on our debt, and during the budget process, I suggested we do this, so that we'd not have to raise taxes. That suggestion was not accepted by the board, and we did not have these funds available to us to prevent a tax increase. I was told that using funds in this way was not a sound money management practice, as this money was a one-time windfall and couldn't be counted on in future years. Meanwhile, I very well remember the budget process in June 2013, as I attended every board meeting. The board was told that we faced a dire situation if they did not raise taxes. The board was split on whether to raise taxes to the index of 2.7% or raise them by 2.31%. The final increase was 2.31%, and as with the previous years, 2.79%. That increase resulted in today's discussion subject, a slightly smaller, but still substantial surplus of $700,000. Now, we are told that our capital reserve fund needs replenishment, thanks to all the projects that have depleted it from a high of just over $7 million to the current 5.8 million. The urgency of this situation is greater, we are told, because 2.4 million of that 5.8 million must be held in escrow during the high school renovation. We've been told that if we are faced with an emergency, we cannot borrow any more money, because we have borrowed to the maximum possible to fund the high school project. I will point out that I unsuccessfully advocated for a reduction in the size and scope of the high school project, putting the district in a situation for too long a period of time where we would be unable to borrow any funds. I also pointed out the notion that we would be able to fund a $33 million project without having an impact on taxes would prove to be false. The depletion of the capital fund has caused, has been caused by a myriad of spending this year and last. In my opinion, we need to put a moratorium on all capital spending that does not meet a very simple test. Can we get by without spending the funds? I believe that if we can do so, we should reverse several of our recent decisions to purchase items that do not meet that test. Examples would include the $40,000 for additional video cameras for the buses, and 60 of the 120 wireless access points, since we already have 60 in place, that are nearing the end of their useful lives, but have not reached the end-of-life state, saving approximately $48,000. If we accept the administration's recommendation and put the money into our capital reserve fund, I believe we will be perpetuating a vicious cycle of capital spending during the year, and tax increased, tax increases to cover those costs. For the past two years, the board raised taxes, not to cover the cost of capital spending, but to cover operating costs. Indeed, we passed a budget this past June that projected a deficit, as did the budgets of the previous two years, and yet those budgets resulted in big surpluses, which, it has been suggested, are now needed to cover our capital spending. So, while the board thought it was raising taxes to cover operating expenses, the reality is that those taxes were not needed for the stated purpose. We are now asked to keep that money to cover our unending appetite for capital spending. Now is the time to break this cycle. I strongly recommend that we keep the money in the general fund, and pledge to use it for the sole purpose of reducing or eliminating the need for tax increases in the coming year. We could always transfer the funds to the capital fund in the event of an emergency at a later date, and let's not forget that we have other money available to us in an emergency. Dave, you can correct me on these numbers, but we have over $3,200,000 in our budgetary reserve, and we have approximately $5 million in our Peasers' reserve, in addition to the 5.8 million in our capital fund, for an approximate total of $5.8 million. in addition to the 5.8 million in our capital fund for an approximate total of $14 million. If we transfer that money to the capital fund now, then we tie our own hands and perpetuate the cycle for yet another year. We know that we are going to have increases in costs to cover in the next school year. We have a teacher's contract that expires at the end of this year and salary increases that will go into effect in January that will carry forward to the next school year, not to mention the inevitable increase in our required contribution to the Piersers Pension Fund. The argument that we can't do this because it's a one-time expense does not hold water when we have had one-time surpluses for the past two years and are on track for yet another surplus this year. Let's hold on to this money and rest easier, knowing that we will not need to increase taxes nearly so much in June, if at all. If we apply the standard of urgent necessity to any proposed capital spending, at least until the high school project is done, then we should be able to do without another 700K injection into that fund. Our economy requires us to take measures to help restore to health. This endless cycle needs to be broken today. I urge my fellow directors to join me in taking action on behalf of our taxpayers and our economy. Ultimately, a healthy local economy would do more on behalf of our kids than the path PGSD has taken over the past 12 years. And I'd like to make a motion to not, to keep the money in the general fund.
I had another question. Sorry, Dave, did you have a?
Well, hold on one second. So what I'm going to ask is, if you could just hold on to your motion for a second, just to ask questions about what's going on, what Dave's presentation, and then we'll bring that motion back and we'll look for a second. Is that okay? All right, so go ahead.
Okay. So my other question was that we're also expecting, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're also expecting some money from, from the Ringing Rocks renovation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Oh, sorry.
That, that is correct. If, if the money is received, there's probably about $300,000 of additional funds beyond what was budgeted. However, I do want to point out that, you know, can I say at this point in time whether we're going to have a surplus or not? No, I can't. It's, it's very early in the, in the school year. There are some positive trends. We have teachers or personnel that were budgeted for that are not working at this point in time. We have other people in for them that are at a lesser cost, so that's, that's a positive thing. But we, we do, we have hired some positions, especially for some very needed programs in our elementary school that positions were not budgeted for. And as of this week, we're reviewing our invoices in our population that has, have enrolled in charter schools this year. And we have about 32 additional students in there than we did last year. Now, we program for some additional students in our, in our budget, but certainly not 32. So there are some, some cost drivers out there that are making me a little uncomfortable with the direction that we're heading right now. Hopefully, things will stabilize and we can reverse the trend. But as of right now, there are some, some negative indicators out there.
Okay, so my next question is, back when we were doing our bond purchase, I think that you explained to us that we were, that we got such a good rate because we had a decent amount of money in our reserves. Is that correct?
When we have our due diligence call with the, with the rating companies, Standard and Poor's or Moody's or whomever we're, we're using for, for any, for the given bond issue, they, they interview me to determine what our thought processes are and what policies and procedures we put in place to protect the district fiscally moving forward. So they specifically address things like the capital reserve fund, whether you're planning ahead for stability, and also your plans for the retirement increases because they will continue to increase approximately 25% per year for the next three years. So they have liked my answers. They have liked the fact that we have set aside a substantial amount of money to defray the cost of the Piersers rate increases. And they have supported the addition or stabilization of a, of a capital reserve fund to hold us over should, you know, issues occur in the future. Basically, the, the, the rating agencies are looking to see if we're looking on a long-term fiscal stability format rather than just a current, short-term focus.
Okay, next question. How, because I, I know last time when we had, you know, we had a surplus, half went into the capital reserve and half went into the Piersers. How do you feel we stand right now on our Piersers?
The rates are scheduled to go up astronomical numbers and it will be difficult no matter how much money we have. But I feel that if I were to pick one over the other right now, I feel the, the value of the money in the capital reserve fund is, is more important than the value of putting additional money into the, the retirement reserve. And the reason I'm saying that is we've, we've been lucky enough to be able to address all of our schools in a relatively short period of time as far as renovations. But middle school is now our oldest project. West is very close. But some of the components of that, that was built in 1999, occupied in 1999, so some of the components will be reaching their 20-year life expectancy. Hopefully, it'll last longer than 20 years, but we could start to experience some, some challenges in that 20 to 25-year range, which is going to be well within our, our financing, our debt service on the high school project. So, you know, to the extent we have some money available in there that would limit the amount we would have to borrow if we would have to borrow at all for those types of projects.
Sorry. Okay. Every time you talk and say something, then it makes me think, oh, I have this other question. So I hope that's okay. So thinking on, because we've been told we should think on a, at least a two-year cycle. So, you know, you've mentioned the middle school, thinking over a two-year cycle, worst-case scenario, and, and this might be a question for somebody else, but on a two-year cycle, worst-case scenario, what do you think we're going to need to keep that in working condition?
Right now, there are no failing, no, no items failing at the middle school other than the cooling tower that we discussed at our last meeting. That, we were looking at a rough estimate of $125,000 to repair. We're not expecting anything to fail in the next two years. But if you don't take advantage of the money that you have available when it's available, it might not be available when you need it, is, is the planning purpose.
And I just wanted to comment, Mrs. Gallion, that we were talking during the operations meeting prior to this meeting about having Mike put, put forth a kind of a projection on some of the major things that might fail in the various buildings so that the board can see that there, there really is a need because we know, you know, roofs only last so much and cooling, you know, cooling towers only last so much and we have other needs that'll probably come up just because of the age of the equipment. Just, just today, Mike was describing an issue with the cooling system at West and we're going to have to come back to the board and have that conversation as to whether we want to repair that now or replace that. And that was something that we, we didn't foresee, but we can foresee some of the things. And then there's other things that he thinks that perhaps this was a lightning strike that might have caused this issue and that we can't foresee. But, but ultimately, we know things are going to fail. So we're, we're, part of our budget process, we're going to come back with a forecast that might help the board to at least understand that we are trying to proactively put that money aside for things that we think are going to happen.
Personally, I think it would be really helpful for me to make the decision of where this should go if we have that, that report. So I don't know if it's possible to, if we have to make a decision on this at this meeting, it would be helpful to me to have more information, you know, as much information as we can get. I'm all for putting this in, in the capital reserves if, you know, if we see that there is a need and that we, you know, I'd just like to see some numbers and some specifics. I don't know. Sorry, that's just me.
I think, I mean, I'd like to know how much we think we do need. Right last year, I was at the same board meetings and I think there was somewhere in the area of 7 million. Now we're looking at 5.8 minus, what, 2.4? That goes into escrow. So that's a significant difference. But what on that list do we, do we expect might cost us $2.5 million versus the, the cooling tower, I think is pretty expensive? And that's, that's about a half a million, right? Okay, so, so a, a major failure, we're looking at 125. And, and we have anywhere from, in the last couple of years, $2.5 million at our disposal to, to 7 million at our disposal. How much is enough? I do agree with Rick that we're looking at operational costs and we're, and we're, and we're worried about operational costs. We're coming out at a, now a 7, $700,000 and a $900,000 surplus. I wouldn't expect it to be a 0% deviation from, from our predictions. That's, that would be a miracle. It would be luck at best if that ever happened, right? But closer would be better. We're tasked with budgeting, right? Dave and Shelley do their work and they present it to us and we say okay or not okay. If we're coming out with a million dollars extra to $400,000 extra, then we're not doing our due diligence. We've got to get that closer. And how much is enough? So is it 7 million? Is it 17 million? I understand it affects our, our borrowing rate, but we're not planning on borrowing, right? We just borrowed out for the next 15 years with the high school renovation. So we're not planning on borrowing. We're not planning on needing that good interest rate. Something might happen. But I think we need to look and explore other options. It seems to me that this is just the standard. We get a surplus, we put it in the capital reserve and we spend out of the capital reserve. And I do agree that we have to have more in there than we plan on spending because there's unplanned spending all the time. But we need to, we need to understand how much do we need? Is it millions of dollars or is it? I know there's other districts in this county that have a lot less than, than what we do and I know there's districts that have more and for different reasons. But I think we need to understand how much we need and what's on the plate for the next two years. And can we afford to do this or can we afford to do something that affects our taxpayers?
I would, I would really appreciate that. Like you said, like a, a two-year worst-case scenario. You know, and if it's justified, okay, you know, I don't want our schools to fall apart. But it would help if it was in writing and we had a good list.
Just to clarify one thing that Mr. Alexander indicated, we have not borrowed everything for the high school project. We have a staggered three-year borrowing plan. So we will have to go back out to market sometime in early 2015 for another borrowing and possibly in 2016 for a third borrowing. So we will be going back out and it will affect, could affect, don't say will, I'm not the, I'm not the bond raider. But, you know, that whatever decisions we make will have whatever impact they have. We will be going back out on the market in the near future.
If we waited until June to make this decision, would that harm us?
No, the only, the only, the only issue that's out there and this, this would not impact it at all is that there are certain thresholds for fund balance that school districts can carry. And it's an 8% unreserved fund balance. So this would be, even with this, it would be less than that. We, we could, we could.
I'd just say that, Rick, I agree with you, your statement. And I just want to say one thing. I just want to pass something along. I'm in the middle of selling my home. I'm still staying in Pots Grove, but I'm selling my current home. And I've probably had 10 to 12 couples come look at my house and the biggest thing that they tell me is, wow, I can't believe how high your taxes are for this house at this, what it's assessed at. They just can't believe it's, and as we discussed at the meeting, what one group meeting we had, we play the third highest tax rate in Montgomery County. That's a hard pill to swallow. How much higher can we go? People can't even sell their homes to get out because people don't want to buy them. If you look at the housing market in Pots Grove and look how long houses have been on the market and how drastically they had have been reduced, to sell the home is hard. It's a hard pill to swallow. It's also a hard pill to swallow when you find out that lower Pots Grove alone has the second largest foreclosure rate in Montgomery County. Lower Pots Grove alone. That's a hard pill to swallow. So I think Rick is on the right track. We need to figure out how we can work on these tax increases. These tax increases are hurting the people in Pots Grove because, as you know, we have no real commerce. So the burden of funding the school district is on the taxpayers, almost 100%. It's just, it's really difficult. So anything we can do, Rick, like you're saying, on those lines of, of working to get a lower tax increase, as low as possible, lower than we've been getting, it's just, it has to be done. And, and now is a good time to start. I agree, Rick.
Mike, this is probably a question for you possibly, if you could answer it. As we would be as a homeowner, we have to worry about replacing our roofs every 20 years, 25, 20, 25 years. With middle school, that's coming up in the next five years. Is that roof the type that we as a homeowner have to worry about replacing? Or is that something that get repaired as needed? And what type of cost would that be for that type of building? You have any idea?
It's not a typical homeowner-type of roof. What, in, in some respect it is. A typical flat roof, it's a complete rubber roof on the middle school. But the middle school has a ballast roof, so it's not a glued-down roof per se. It's ballast, small stone that holds the rubber to the roof structure. We have a, a service contract, a preventative maintenance service contract on the middle school roof. It is not under warranty. Our only buildings that are, that are still under roof warranty are Ringing Rocks and Lower. They still have their original warranties from construction. Obviously, the high school roof is being replaced shortly and West, their roof is slightly out of warranty and we just had to do some extensive repairs to that roof this summer. At this point in its life cycle, we're not seeing major failures with any components of the middle school roof, which would be troublesome because, you know, water infiltration creates the other indoor quality concerns. We have seen some small leaks that we have a roofing contractor that provides the preventative maintenance. Ongoing odds and ends when we, when we discover a roof leak. But we don't have any reason to expect that there's going to be any sort of major failure to the, to the membrane of that roof. The other component to that is there are continual new products that are coming onto the market to extend the life cycle of rubber membranes. 20 years ago, it was, you know, kind of middle ground. That was, that became industry standard around that time. So there are additional coatings that can be put on that extend the, the life cycle of... of, of the rubber membranes. Again, you know, you're talking a lot of labor when you're looking at a, a roof the size of, you know, 140,000 square feet, give or take of, of what the middle school's looking at. So as far as roofs concerned, I don't have any major concerns, especially since we addressed the issue at West. That was our, our major roof issue that we were dealing with. I hope that answered it.
Any other questions or comments? I just have a question. So kind of just to piggyback off, if there's no downside of leaving the money right now in, right now it's general fund. If we left it there, there's no downside, it does not, it's just going to stay there. Okay? If we prolonged it into budget season as that shapes up and develops, there's no downside to that either? I think, just listening to the conversation, I'm, I'm also siding with Rick on we have to do something and we need to do a little bit better. It's a little bit uncomfortable conversation to have with our neighbors when we have to tell them we have 900,000 extra dollars in our funds and we're directing them towards capital spending. 700,000. These numbers are a little bit high for, so personally, I would like to see us move, hold on to this for right now, until we can see a little bit further into the budget season, what, what that's going to look like. If we can do anything to reduce our tax burden for our constituents, we should be doing everything possible that we can while also understanding, you know, and I hate to say these worst-case scenario things, I mean, nothing, we're, we're hoping that nothing, a building doesn't fall over, but, you know, we want to be prepared as well for the future. So I think we can make a better decision as to where to direct these funds, especially knowing that once we put them in capital reserve, we cannot take them back out. So I'm, I'm going to, Rick, I, I think, I think I'm going to ask that we reserve directing these funds anywhere and just leaving them where they are in the general fund for right now and not committing to one side or the other. And you can certainly make your motion, but I think we're kind of on the same page.
I think we are. In fact, the motion I'll make is that we, we defer this decision until June.
You can certainly do that, but no action leaves it where it is anyhow. But I mean, you know, again, if you want, you know, I mean, I-
I motion we do nothing.
I second that.
Thank you. All right. All right. So we'll have this conversation again.
Could I, could I follow up with the second part of the question? This doesn't take any money at all, but if we could recommit the $275,000 that was projected to be used for the Peasars Reserve, to the Peasars Reserve again, that'll allow us to use that when we need it in the upcoming years.
Can you put that in English that I can understand? We, we had 275,000 we intended to use for Peasars, but we didn't, right?
Correct. We, we had expected, we had budgeted for a, when we created the budget for a deficit and that planned deficit was to pay for part of the Peasars Reserve. Because we ended up with a surplus, we did not utilize those monies. But they're scheduled, we, we provided a schedule on a planned utilization of those funds. So if we don't take a, make a motion to recommit them, they go away. They, they just go into the general fund fund balance. They're not committed anymore for that purpose. To ease the impact of the future years, that I'm recommending that we recommit those, those funds to defray the cost of Peasars in this year or next year, the year after.
All right. So here's what's confusing me, is do we have $700,000 in surplus money or do we have 700 plus 275,000 in surplus money? And if we recommit, if it's 700,000, if we recommit, does that reduce the 700,000 that we have available?
No. No. When, when we, when we did the original budget, there was a projected deficit, okay? Due to revenue coming in stronger than was budgeted and expenditures coming in less than what was budgeted, we ended up with a surplus rather than a, a use of fund balance. Again, what I'm asking is that we continue to maintain a Peasars Reserve of 5.1 million dollars instead of, it was scheduled to go down to 4.85 or whatever, to defray costs moving forward. There is still $700,000 available in the general fund. Yes.
Okay. Dave, could I ask another question on that one? Sorry. So are Peasars' contribution, the difference between last year and this year, it was an increase of, was it $2 million?
I would have to pull up my spreadsheet on that, but it was, it was material. I think, I think it was 1.2 million, but don't hold me to that. And, and it's scheduled to go up. This year, it's at 21.4%. Next year, it's supposed to be in excess of 25. And over the next several years, it'll get up as high as 33, 34% contribution. So it's going up substantially year over year. By having this money, we can spread the impact of that out over a longer period of time so that we don't have any, as, as significant an impact on our taxpayers in those years.
I'll move to recommit the Peasars funds.
And I'll second that. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Moving on to our second discussion item, we wanted to speak to you about the district-provided off-site internet access possibility that we were discussing during the curriculum committee meeting the other evening and then sent out some subsequent updated information. So Michael, if you want to come up and maybe just give an executive summary of, of the issue at the podium with the speaker?
All right. A quick executive summary. I don't seem to be having a lot of luck with technology tonight. I'm, it's, it's my day job, but I don't always love it. And Yolanda, her issue was, was my problem because I could, I didn't come up with the quick solution to a simple issue fast enough. She was prepared, so I take responsibility for it. One of the topics that we discussed when we were, when we were looking at the, the issues surrounding the adoption of the Dial program and specifically the one-to-one strategy was the concern about families that, in Pottsgrove that did not have internet access. And there were a lot of reasons why we chose the particular technologies we chose and certainly one of them was that we had the capacity to do a lot of work offline with the software environment that comes with the iPads and the MacBook Airs. But still, there are activities that if you don't have internet access at home, you, you can't participate in, you can't participate in after-hours online discussions, for example. So there are a number of, of options that we can consider. We are, as we're building out our one-to-one informational website and portal as we prepare for deployment, one of the things that we're doing is we're focusing attention on, on Comcast's $9.95 program for eligible families. But there, there are criteria for being accepted into that program, so it may not be a good fit for all families. We're also cataloging all the, the local Wi-Fi, the public access points, businesses, the Pottstown Library and so forth. And we can even look at some issues in terms of making our own campus resources available after hours. But one of the, one of the things that I was looking at was, much like at this point in time, prior to the one-to-one rollout, when we recognized there was a need for kids to have access to technology at home and where that wasn't available, we made some of our laptops available for overnight loan in, out of our libraries. There, there is a technology, it's, it's the only technology that I'm aware of due to the, you know, due to the fact that it's, it's patented and marketed specifically to K-12 schools, that would allow us to either purchase or lease mobile access points, 4G, LTE access points that are filtered, CIPA compliant and that can be loaned out from our library, plugged in and immediately visible to a wireless device such as an iPad or a I gave to you in, in your packet some of the specifications and a couple of different quotes. I want to be clear, I'm not looking at committing any, any new funds to, to this project. I would, if this is something that we wanted to look into further, we believe that we can fund it with the proceeds from the sale of the equipment that we will be moving out of inventory. Again, another advantage, the technology we selected is the residual value and based on prior experience, we've put our junk, so to speak, out for bid or, you know, for quotes from various reputable recyclers and resellers and we know what that equipment will chase in terms of, in terms of, of a price. And we think that although we would have to probably front the money, we believe that we can recoup the money from that sale. So that would be, there would be a, there would be no, no reduction in the technology budget. There would be no, I'm not asking for any new dollars, be committed to it if this is something that we wanted to do. There are some advantages. They have a, a lease program. This particular company has a, a lease program that, but it starts at a threshold of 100 If you compare that to purchasing a comparable number or even somewhat fewer, you would find that the leasing is far more effect, far more price effective. One reason is that there are no data overages, your, it's unlimited data. Another issue that we wouldn't have to deal with would be devices that failed. They don't belong to us technically and they would, we would ship them the defective device, they would ship us a new device. But it, you know, it, it looks, it looks costly and we could, we could start much smaller by purchasing maybe a dozen, two dozen devices, survey our community, see what the need is. If we find that a demand exceeds supply, I'm speaking to the sales rep from KJET, which is, is the company, I failed to mention the name of the company, KJET of McLean, Virginia, they said that they would credit us back for the purchase of those, of those devices and move us into a lease program, but they can't do the reverse. So we, in other words, we don't want to start high and then back off. We want, if we're going to do it, I would do it, suggest doing it conservatively and then holding them to that offer if we need to ramp up. But the, the problem again with purchasing is that we would have to purchase a data plan and we might be responsible for some overages if that should be the case. So at least with a lease, you know exactly what you're paying and there's no risk. So that's the, that's what I'm putting out here tonight for discussion. I have no specific recommendation. My, my mission simply to provide options and to address the concerns that were expressed by members of the community and members of the board back earlier this year when we were discussing the one-to-one.
I voted to put this in front of the board at the committee, but I also said that I had some mixed feelings on it and I still do. On the one hand, we spent considerably more money to purchase Apple products than we could have spent by going onto, say, a Chromebook or any other, any, quite a few other options. But one of the reasons that you put forward to us at the time was that at least convinced me that Apple might be the better way to go was its offline capabilities, specifically in the case where we had a student who didn't have internet access so that they could make use of these devices even if they don't, at home, even if they don't have internet connection. On the other hand, we have a high percentage of economically disadvantaged students and we want to offer them every opportunity to excel and so we don't want to make a decision that, that causes them to not have the same advantages as everybody else. I also asked you at the time last week, might it just be less expensive to simply buy internet connection for those families rather than give them devices? In other words, set them up with Comcast on our dime. And given the $10 a month program, I'm, I, I wonder if that might still be a more economically feasible alternative to buying the KJET products or leasing them.
Just a couple of points to me. First, I, I stand by our, our Apple decision because I still say that the total cost of ownership, when you consider the residual cost, is ultimately lower. I think also if you look at some districts that, and I'm not knocking Chromebooks, they are what they are and people, you know, buy them and, and they like them. And I think Google's a phenomenal, you know, they have a phenom, phenomenal educational ecosystem. But if you take a look at some of the districts that have gone the Chromebook route, they're now going iPads. So one, one district down 422 is a, is a perfect example, one that we've, you know, we've worked with pretty closely in terms of designing our program. They abandoned their Chromebook program in, in their middle school and they, they just deployed iPads within the last month or so. As far as purchasing, and, and I, and I, and I struggle with the very same things that you're, you're saying. I mean, to what extent, you know, are, is the school district responsible for, you know, students' internet access in the home? My own belief is, as you, I think, very eloquently put it, I think we have a responsibility to level the playing field for our kids and to give every student, regardless of their economic background or whatever other issues that, you know, economic or otherwise, that prevents them from having the same type of, of access as, as, as other students. And that's why, and, and balancing those two, balancing, you know, those two factors, our responsibility to do everything we can for students, but to also be responsible financially to, to the community and the taxpayers is why we would be looking at doing this in a way that would not have a budgetary impact, except obviously there's an opportunity cost. I mean, if we're using proceeds from the laptop sales and old server sales for this, we're not do, we're not doing something else with it. That, that part I completely understand. As far as purchasing internet access for families, I don't know that Pottsgrove would qualify for the $9.95. And I don't, I'm not saying that to be flipped at, at all. I just don't, I think what we do, you know, for, for example, in our cyber, in our cyber program, in order for our cyber program that we run here within the district to be competitive with cyber charters, who by the way are reimbursing their families for their internet access up to- up to some threshold on Potts Grove's dime, because they bill us for the tuition, and that's part of the expense, we do the same for families in our cyber program who request it. We will pay up to a certain amount for their, you know, for their internet access, so that they can participate fully in the cyber program. So, in, in a way, I mean, I think the proverbial, you know, chorus has almost left the barn, I, I, I think. But this is a big step forward. I think we would be well ahead of the curve. I gave you a geographical map of other schools in the, around the country that offer similar programs. It's growing, but we would certainly be among the first in this, in this, in this region, and, but again, I'm, I'm putting this out there as, as a topic for discussion, because it's, it would be a cost-effective way of accomplishing that.
Because I'm torn, my feeling is that, and I don't, this isn't, I don't usually believe in kicking the can down the road, but it's the second time today that I'm going to suggest that we do just that, and why don't we get started with one-to-one, and see what the need is, before we commit more funds? And, and you're right, if there isn't a budgetary impact, but you pointed out the opportunity cost, so it's still a cost, and that would be my suggestion.
Michael, could you just let, inform the rest of the board, some of the information you did tell the committee last week as well, such as the estimated families that you think we might have in our six through 12 age group, that might need this service? Because I think that'd be helpful to know as well.
Sure, we, we did some surveying, and we can certainly survey again, but we had, we did some surveying back in the spring of the 2012, 13 school year, so it was the spring of 2013. And, and at that point, based on student responses, it looked like there were about 6% of our families did not have internet access at home. And it was a pretty straightforward question, didn't ask what kind of internet access you have, it didn't ask whether, you know, there was a, you know, a computer available on demand, or whether internet access was available on demand, or whether it was through a cellphone, it simply asked, or smartphone, rather, it simply asked, you know, do you, do you have internet access at home? And at that point, it was about 6%, and that was, we, we did grades three through 12, so, but, you know, if you take 6% of 1750 grades, six through 12, that would be our estimate at this point in time.
I just had a question about reading the literature, what I understood, and I wasn't at the committee meeting, so this might be a dumb question that you guys already have the answer to. My understanding was this was a device that students would check out on an as-needed basis, not something that would sit in their house.
That is correct.
Okay, so, so this is something just, when they know that they're going to need internet access, that they're going to have to do something off-site that night, that they could check it out and take it home? So it wouldn't be, we're not providing them internet access at all times?
That, that's correct, and we would not, and under a, a lease scenario, we would not be paying for it in the summer when it wasn't being used.
So then, my other question is, do, I mean, you, you've, you've asked this, kind of polled the students, the population, have we informed them of alternate?
Excellent question. In our, in our first aid packet is the Comcast literature. In addition, you know, it will be, it will appear prominently on our web portal, between this past fall, when our, or late summer, when our, our first aid packet went out, and the, you know, the public release, so to speak, of our, of our one-to-one portal, the answer would be no. We haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't done any of that, except on a case-by-case basis, when you knew that was a, a need of a specific family.
And then you had, you had kind of mentioned using our facilities here. Have we thought about possibly, for those students who don't have home internet access, maybe making sure that they have an extra study hall, or possibly an, an after-school time that they could use it?
I, I, you know, if, if you're asking, me feels, I philosophically believe the school is, the schools are a resource to the community, and not just, you know, from 7:00 AM to 3:30, you know, or 4 o'clock PM. To the extent, and again, but there are, you know, understand there are costs associated with this, but my personal belief is that our libraries, you know, or at least a library in the school, should be available to students in the evening, but they have to be staffed, of course. So, transportation may be an issue, but I, I, I'm really passionate about making the resources that this community pays for available to all kids. Anyone else?
Well, I just want to say also that, to your point, Dee, there's, it seems to me that there's just a, some unanswered questions. How many students have or will sign up for the reduced internet cost? Now, you know, Michael, you also brought up an important point in committee that I want to make on behalf of this, which is that lending this equipment out in the library doesn't just help disadvantaged students, but, but also makes a device available to, potentially to a student who's going on vacation and has an assignment due, or, you know, just going away for the weekend, let's say. So there are other uses beyond the main topic, but the reality is that the majority of the users would likely be people who don't have internet connections at home. And if half of the hundred or so families take advantage of the Comcast program, then our needs in this arena would be much less. So I, again, just would like to have more data before we make a commitment of funds.
I just, also, I guess my opinion on this as a whole is if, we've, we've decided on one-to-one, it's a mandate for students to use it, and I don't think we should be passing on a cost, any cost, whether it's time, money, transportation, or anything to the students. As Rick said, a level playing field. My kids come home, they use the internet for their homework every night, and I think, especially if we're going to be one-to-one, that should be available to every student without additional cost or inconvenience. Although I think it is great to have the library open and available in the evening, that might be a better place to work for some people. I know it al, always was for me. I've just, in my head, it's hard to, it's hard to imagine that a, that a student would only need access overnight, just because I know how much mine use it, with Google Docs and things like that. Now, I guess they could put that on, they could download that directly to their device before they come home from school, but it just seems to me that they would need it more than just occasionally overnight, and so it would be important to me to, if that 6% is accurate, I just, somehow my head, I see them needing this in their house all the time.
And I think, you know, I think the need, if we go down this, this path, the need will certainly drive the, the distribution strategy, and that's one of the reasons, I think, why I was looking at, in addition to the fact that it was simply more cost-effective, I was looking at that lease at that 100 threshold, but, again, I, I, I don't think it's a bad idea to, to re-survey, you know, our, our families and see where we stand, you know, see where we stand today, we'll, we'll have to figure out a way to do it other than email, of course, you know, other than, you know. You know, it, it may, it may sound funny, but, you know, we send these blasts out, and we know, and we're missing some of our, some of our families. They may be getting it from their, from their smartphone, but, you know.
We could survey them in school, though.
You could survey them in school.
Michael, one of the que, the things I'm struggling with, with this idea, is about sending these leased units home with the students, is, as much as we all would love to believe all our students are all responsible, I find it that it may be difficult to retrieve these things once they're signed out. Now granted, that may go, like Mike, or Matt said, that they'll have something at home all the time, but it's really our property if we're leasing it, and I'm not sure what recourse we would have to get those back.
Well, you know, we have the same issue with library books.
They cost a lot less.
They, well, many of them do, that, that is true, but, I mean, we struggle, we struggle with, I mean, it's, it's not, you know, it's not an overwhelming problem, but it certainly is, is a problem with, you know, with materials that we loan out.
Basically, what I'm trying to say, I think, is these units should be used as a last resort. I mean, the parents should be given all other possible resources available before they send their, give this, you know, have their student bring this home.
And how long, what's the lag time? When we decide, okay, we need, say we need 100 devices, how long does it take for us to get those in?
Not very long.
So we could, we could potentially wait, start the one-to-one, assess what the need is, because possibly some students or some parents won't realize, you know, they'll say, oh, no, we don't need it, and then, not realizing the need. Or they might think that they need it, and then find out, oh, my student really doesn't have that much homework that they need to do, that many things that they need to do at home. So potentially, we could wait until we've started this, and then very quickly get units if we need them?
Quickly enough, yeah. And I, I think, again, at this point, I just wanted to report to the board what I had found, and to provide, and to provide an option that I thought we could, you know, we could manage, and, you know, again, obviously with the cost, but not with, not with a, a cost out of, out of our budget, you know, so.
Mike, could you just clarify and make this, so everyone else is aware as well? With, if we go with these units, and it is a lease, there is a minimum quantity, and there's a minimum period of time that we lease these for, right?
Yes.
That we're committed, versus buying them?
Buying them, that we own them, yes. And if we lease, I, what I had prepared was, what I had asked them to prepare, was a lease to take us through the balance of this school year, and then a, and then a lease, and to try to work that, that bottom line down as far as possible, a lease that would take us through the balance of the school year with a renewal after July 1 for the following year, and that was able to get, they were able to get the price down by about $4,000 over the life of that 18-month lease, so. So there was some advantage, you know, to doing that. But again, we could, you know, we could start out much smaller, and convert a handful of purchases to a lease if we found that that was, you know, that, that need was there. The problem with, you know, purchasing them is when the need hopefully, over time, goes away, we've got these out-of-date, you know, and technology, of course, changes, we're sitting on a bunch of out-of-date, you know, access points.
Michael, I know you said that for the first year, it initially with our, the sale of some of our equipment, that this is budget neutral. After the first little while, like the second year too, is it also budget neutral?
We, based on what we plan to remove from our inventory this coming winter, after we do the one-to-one rollout, and move the, our better equipment down into the elementary division, and making the assumption that our, our teacher computers are now at the end of their, of their four-year life cycle, we would be assessing those 275 machines, some of which we might continue to use, but many of which are probably destined for, for the resale. We believe that we could fund it through next school, the end of next school year. After that, if the need is still there, there are, there are probably some other options. I would, I would seek grants. One possibility is with 100 or more of these devices, if they weren't all being utilized in the, in the secondary division, some could be shifted down to the elementary division, improving connectivity for parents in our elementary division, and that, in and of itself, might warrant some Title I, would qualify for Title I funding. That's just an idea, it's not, that's not a recommendation, but if it looked like we were going to be running out of funds generated through those sales, I would be out there looking for grant funding. I don't, I would not be asking for a budgetary commitment.
So, do you need grant funding now?
Yeah, I could.
Michael, all I, all I want to recommend is, the last thing I would want to see is, for this one-to-one kickoff, and we hear about a student who couldn't complete a project because they didn't have the internet access that they needed. So whatever we have to do between now and the kickoff, ask the teachers or, or the principals, is there gonna, are there gonna be assignments where they need in, internet access at home? And if there is, can we, can we do something about that? Whether it's, whether it's buy two dozen of these, or whatever we need to do, instead of waiting to find out and see if there's a problem, because once there's a problem, we know what that's going to turn into, all these seats will be filled, right, for the next meeting, and we didn't plan the way we should have. So if we could just try to make sure that we're not going to hit that situation where there's a student who can't complete an assignment because they didn't have the internet access.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll, I will, I'll discuss that with the principals, we'll try to get our numbers. Again, we can certainly get some purchased ones if there's a need, to get us started, and then we can, we can look down the road and, and see what the needs are at that point in time, and respond appropriately.
Before I take my turn, Mr. Zolman, if you had a question?
Thank you. Mike, in an attempt to be helpful, let me ask the question. Have we talked to the municipalities, upper, lower, and west, about what they might be able to do to help us in this situation?
I have not, no.
Let me suggest that that might be an avenue. Each of the municipalities has to sign a franchise agreement, both Comcast and Verizon, long-term, multi-year, to talk about providing what we see as cable and internet service to all the residents of those townships. Those contracts provide for the townships to receive a certain amount of money for the service, and they also provide, depending on the township, and they're individually negotiated, other services, like cable access channels, and surprisingly, internet access, for the townships themselves, meaning for the municipal use, and also for, I think it's west, I'm not quite sure, some residents' use. I don't know how they talk about it, I don't know how they think about it, but it's worth finding out if there was anything in those contracts that might let us leverage some of that use.
It's a good idea, and we'll certainly contact the townships.
And, and just listen to this, I, I wouldn't like for us to see us go this route at launch of one-to-one. And I say that because, and correct me if I'm wrong, we don't turn the internet off on the weekends around the building.
No, we do not.
And you could still come to a building and access the internet.
From our parking lot?
I'm asking.
Conceivably, yeah.
Or a bench.
We certainly have needed the parking lot, but if, but yeah, I mean, if they were coming in for a, a band activity, or, you know, yeah, or internet's on all the time.
And we also, at the high school, we've just spent a significant amount of money on access points to improve coverage in the building, but also around, making it more of like a collegiate campus.
Oh, absolutely, but we're not, you know, we haven't installed, we haven't installed them yet, but yes, that is.
But it is, it's available.
Down the road, yes, absolutely.
Okay. I, I guess what I'm saying is, I would like to see us use what we have first, to allow students, and certainly not, not putting someone at a disadvantage, but there also is, I mean, somewhere we have to draw the line, in my, my opinion. And it's a fine line, I know, because we're handing them something and saying, maybe it's not going to work for you, but...
I just wanted to be clear, I stood before you months ago and said, this is the way to go, and we can make it work for kids without internet access. I stand by that. But I, I never said that it would be an entirely level playing field when somebody's going home to, you know, a 50-meg Comcast or Verizon pipe, and somebody else is, is accessing the internet on their iPhone. So that's, that's all I wanted to say there, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
So, I, I guess I'm saying, I would rather... So I, I guess I'm saying, I would rather see the program launch and assess the needs of the program, and I don't, of course, I'm just one person, but assess the needs of the program first before we make a significant investment into, into these devices.
So I, I have a bit of a conflicting mandate here, I just wanted, I have been paying attention to everything everybody has been saying, so I guess what I, I need is essentially...
Michael needs some direction.
I need some marching orders, and, and I, I can do everything that Mr. Alexander requested right up to the line where I hear the rest of the board saying, don't commit any funds to this at this point in time. And I, I just want to know, and again, I'm not making any specific recommendation, I only, I raise this for discussion purposes, but what would you like my next, my next steps to be, and I will contact the townships.
Michael, before we make any final decisions, help you out with that, before, before the launch happens, you are planning on having some parents meetings, correct?
Yes.
With both middle school and high school parents, correct?
Correct.
When are those taking place?
They are taking place October 27th, 29th, 30th, and November 6th. While I have the television here, I'm, I swear I'd never do this, but we really want parents to attend those meetings, you only need to attend one, and they're gonna be held, the, the middle school and the high school, but yes, those are...
So possibly by the first meeting, our board meeting in November, you'll have a good idea of what parents may have already said, I, we don't have access to something to, right?
Yes, assuming that those parents attend the meeting, yes.
Correct.
And that's, you know, but we will be getting information out via postal mail. We're actually running a report right, right now on all families, grade six through 12, who do not have internet access, or do not have an email account on record, on file with us. We're gonna make the assumption that they're not getting any of our email communication, and we're going to, we're gonna send postal mail with the information for the one-to-one and the meetings.
So is this the majority opinion that we would like for them to continue down the path of getting the information? Yes, that is the majority opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one last discussion item this evening that's not listed in your agenda, but yesterday when we had our high school renovation team meeting, our administrative team meeting with Dewey Construction, our construction manager, we discussed two issues that need to be presented to you, and I'm not sure if Mike's gonna start or if Jim, Jim Kiefer's here from KCBA to, to discuss these with you.
All right, I'm here because, gonna ask you to allocate some of the construction contingency money for the high school project. During the course of construction, it was discovered that there's some existing electrical conduit down in the tunnels. If you don't know the building, it's too that well, there's a tunnel network that runs under most of the old building, and in a portion of that were some abandoned conduits. It's several electrical conduits, some had wires in them, some did not. We had the electrician look at it, determine what was alive or dead, most of it is dead. We had the construction manager go down there and look at it. It was all raised because the plumber went in there to do some work and said, this stuff's really in the way, it's dangerous, we think it should be removed. So the construction manager defined the scope of work, and we solicited two proposals to do the demolition work. The, the low number we got was from Sargent, they're your asbestos contractor, so they're familiar with demolition work, and their number is not to exceed $12,000. Not to exceed means, they don't know exactly how much time it's gonna take them to do it, they're giving you a top-end number and saying they will, they will bill hourly against that number if it takes them less time, you pay for what they, they worked, but it will not exceed $12,000. The other, the other number we got was $14,500. So this was clearly the lowest price of the two we asked for. Reason we're coming tonight is, this is an area, the 400 wing, that's the area they're working on right now, and there's several rooms, the art rooms are scheduled to be online and turned over to the district at the end of the month. The plumbing line that runs down that trench from the art rooms has to go in, so we really wanted to get authorization on this so that the plumber can get in there in time and meet the milestone deadline. That's the first item. The second item, which we are working on, we do not have a price on yet, but it's coming, on the existing auxiliary gym, that's gonna be turned into the weight room and fitness room. What's missing on the drawings is the metal deck, needs to be put back in there. That area of the building was unique in that it was all wood construction, most of the building is all non-combustible construction. We noticed on, on the existing documents that it was wood and said this needs to be removed because it's a code violation, you know, that was part of, when we look at the code and look at safety issues, we don't want any wood construction in the building. We scheduled all of it to be removed, but what is not on the documents is to put the metal deck back. So we're getting a price together to put the metal deck back into the job, I don't have a cost on that yet, but it will be coming. It's really to inform you, there's, there's a, there's a cost item that we're gonna be coming to the board for, probably next time you meet, for the metal deck.
My question simply is, I think Dave will want this, do you have a numbered change order for us on this $12,000? Or Dave, do you?
No, what the process is gonna be is, since it's a not-to-exceed number and the work has...
No, no, I understand that, I'm simply saying, is this change order number three?
I don't know yet.
What was the last one we did?
The abatement contractor would probably be number four.
This is, right, this is the abatement contractor, Mike says number four.
I don't make a big deal about it, just I think for the minutes in the auditor, you're gonna need to have a change order in the minutes, that's all.
We've, with the abatement contractor, Sargent, we've had a few minor abatement projects outside the initial phase scope of work, that we found additional asbestos-containing material. We have not received those change orders in written form from the abatement contractor. So if we're staying this one in sequential order, this should be number four.
Well, I'd love them to just reflect then, that the number will be substituted when you have all of them in place and we'll add it to our next set of minutes then.
Thank you. The odd part about it is we're having a difficult time getting, getting the written change orders.
We're done.
Thank you. Go on.
And we would, the, the change order for this work would be processed after we get the timing of material slips and gauge that against the $12,000 that they said not to exceed. So we won't write the change order and process it until the work's done and we get the bill. What we're really asking for is board approval that in the future, we're going to process this.
You can submit it later, thank you.
Okay, you gotta help me out here. I understand the first one, okay, they're down there with the plumbing and everything, and they have to get out of the way, get this stuff done, I understand that. I'm looking at the second change order where it was wooden, and of course, it doesn't meet code. The metal roof was not put in the drawings, which therefore did not get into the bid. Okay. As nicely as I can put this, explain to me how the oversight on somebody we hired is going to become a problem that we have to pay the bill. Not saying that we're not going to, I just need clarification on how the oversight can be done with no, you know, we took the bid and we went with what we thought was what we needed to do, and here a major thing like a, a metal roof over the, the gym is, was not in the drawings, which never made it to the, the bid. So how do we have to come up with that?
Okay, I'll clarify, first of all, it's not the metal roof, it's the metal deck, we own all the new roof and it goes on top of it, we own all the replacement of the wrap that goes around the steel underneath it. The piece that's missing is the structural steel deck. Certainly, I understand your frustration that this is something that was missed on the documents, that everybody would feel should be included, okay? It really does come back to the design team that this was something that should be there, but it's not. There's a real distinction to be made here between an omission and an error. This really falls under the category of an omission. It's something that everybody would say should be on the documents, but it's not. It's not on the documents, the contractor gave you a price for only what is on those documents, you do not own it. We need to add it to complete the work, there's a cost associated with that. Our rule on all these things is you should pay for something once, but only once, and pay the fair price. If we had included it in the bid documents, the price would have been whatever that amount is more. You have to pay for it once to own it. It's not, it's not a, a fair assessment to say, hey, Mr. Architect, you screwed this up, you should pay for it. I don't get the new roof over my house, you get the new roof over your building. You ultimately own that steel, you should pay for it. Now what, what the debate comes down to is, is did you pay a premium for that? If that new deck costs $10,000 on bid day and now it costs $11,000, that delta is really on me. That is something we would have no problem accepting the cost for. One of the key roles of your construction manager, Dewey, is to evaluate those numbers, and if they feel that you're being overly charged for the work, certainly come to us and we will make it right.
Boy, you know, I was almost ready to say, yeah, let's just go ahead with it, but then you said that it's not your fault.
I make no claims that the documents or the construction will not have any errors or any mistakes. There will be mistakes, we try to limit them as much as possible. Trust me, I don't like to come to you guys and tell you something's missing on the drawings you have to pay for.
This goes back to a statement I made last year when we were doing the planning, that I felt like we were the only ones with skin in this game, and that you guys aren't taking any responsibility for anything. And discussion was about the, the environmental, uh, uh...
The lead goal.
The lead goal, thank you, and what happens if we don't achieve lead goal. But this just illustrates for me, it's a real stone in my shoe. I understand that mistakes are made, but I don't understand why we're solely responsible for every mistake.
I don't, I don't claim you're responsible for every mistake. I do take exception to what you say, that we don't have skin in the game and we don't have responsibility. We certainly have a tremendous amount of responsibility for this project, and...
How much have we paid you so far?
And, when it comes to change orders, we do not charge a single penny for any change order. This project could have a million dollars in change orders and make no money off of When the insurance went the way it did, where you did it by change order, that $400,000 we made no money on. So this problem, and these problems that come up, that we have to take money out of the fund that was allocated for the project, KCBA makes no money on that. All right, so my skin is in the game, I don't get any benefit out of these additional costs to you.
I have a question, actually, two questions. I always say I have one question, then I have more than one. So this comes out of the, we've already budgeted for, what is it called, contingency costs?
Right, there's a 5% contingency, it's $1.3 million.
Okay, and this is, this is gonna come out of that contingency fund. I don't want to put you on the spot because, you know, I don't want you to say, you know, quote a certain number and then it be, you know, $500 over that, but do you have kind of a general idea of how much this is gonna be? You don't, okay.
I know it's gonna be more than $10,000, and we're gonna have to have board action on it.
And that's not something, now, are you asking tonight for us to, okay, so we don't need to act on that tonight, you're just kind of informing us that this is coming down the road?
Correct.
Okay, but tonight we need to take action on the...
The first item.
The electrical conduit.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say that I see a real distinction between the first and the second. You know, in the first, they got down into the guts and they found something that was unexpected, and nobody could be expected to, to, I mean, you tear things, every homeowner has had that experience when, when they get behind the wall and they find that something wasn't done right, or, or the situation is worse than everybody thought, that's just the normal process. But in the second case, somebody just neglected to, to plan appropriately, and the somebody is the design team, based on what you told me, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
I think neglect is the wrong word.
What word would you like?
It's omission. We, it is not gonna be a perfect set of documents.
Well, I need a case, I see a distinction between the two, but we don't need to vote on the second right now anyway, so...
I motion that we approve the cost to replace what needs to be fixed in the tunnel not to exceed $12,000.
Second item.
Motion is second, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And certainly we thank the gentleman from KCBA for admitting to an error.
No mission.
I used the word I wanted. I believe Ms. Klaus has a report for us.
I can just move on, that's all right. In order to represent my fellow students, I was trying to think of a way that I could gather all their opinions and kind of culminate it so that I could present it to you. So I distributed a survey to the junior and senior classes, I tried to keep it really open, just, I wasn't really asking for anything specifically. The survey just asked for students to express their views on the school and its policies in general, and I received about 500 responses. The survey was open-ended rather than multiple choice, this was my preferred methodology for representing students as authentic, authentically as I could. I made note of any responses that I found recurring, intelligible, significant, or of a passionate nature. I'm gonna try to represent them as many as I can and as best as I can, but it's hard because I did receive 500. So to aid them in topics with which to comment on, I wrote down the one-to-one program. There were a lot of responses for this, many students are concerned that our school wifi will be unable to support all these new computers. There were questions of what to do, should the laptop be broken or stolen, and one student actually asked if it should be pawned and sold, what would we do then? Students who have computers at home question the benefit one-to-one will have for them, and students who do not have internet access at home see the obvious problem this creates. From reading these surveys, it seemed to me like a lot of my classmates believe we must move with technology, and they see some of the benefits of a computer rather than using paper. However, I read from many students that they do not want to feel as though technology is more prominent in their day than they personally desire. There was a suggestion to have an optional class during study hall where students could learn how to use the Mac computers more effectively. There was another suggestion that teachers have more opportunity to be trained so that they can help students more in using these Macs with different projects. While a lot of students see the benefit of one-to-one, there was also many who felt that they had little say in the decision. There were a lot of questions such as, is there gonna be a buyback program, and will these computers take the place of physical textbooks? So what I would suggest is, maybe, and I could do this myself, but if we further survey the students on one-to-one, because this is where we receive, I receive the most information. I also asked students about sports programs and extracurriculars. There were a lot of requests actually for a volleyball team, so I felt that it was important to mention this. One student noted that they were glad we don't have to pay for extra... One student noted that they were glad we don't have to pay for extracurriculars. It was requested that the SNAP program, which is the Student Needs Assistant Program, be revived and that anti-bullying initiatives be reinforced. So what I mean by the SNAP program being revived is just, they'd like to see more of a presence with it actually because they like the program. I also received a survey suggesting that Pots Grove show its support of the LGBT community, which is the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community that's present in our district. I left room at the bottom of the survey for any other comments. And there were many strong responses regarding the dress code. There are students who feel that the dress code policy is inconsistent in the way it is executed. Many feel as though the ratio of women reprimanded over men is significantly disproportionate. Some saying that this has, this has at times to do with the objectification of women. The no-shoulder policy in particular, which says that shoulders must be covered, was noted on several surveys that I read. I also read responses where the student felt that the institution of the no-shoulder policy was unfair in nature and that they were saying that women were being told to cover up rather than boys being told to focus on their schoolwork and not their female classmates' shoulders. In other words, there are students who feel as though women are being made to reform their actions and appearance around the possible attention of male classmates. All in all, the surveys had mixed views about one-to-one. Some supporting the increase in technology, others raising valid concerns regarding it. The amount of extracurriculars and district support of them is still greatly appreciated. And students raised questions over the dress code policy and its execution. So those were the main themes that I saw throughout the topics that I listed. So I was really happy, though, with the constructiveness of most that was written. And a lot of the students seemed really passionate about what they wrote about. And I'll pass it on. This is the survey, so if you want to just take a look. Thank you.
I'd like to see us look at the dress code policy in the policy committee. I've heard enough complaints about it from various quarters, both in terms of the consistency, as you pointed out, Chloe, as well as the disproportionate impact on women or girls versus boys.
It also sounds to me like, Michael, were you planning on, I'm sure you were, but was there plans to have some intensive? I know we're having parent meetings. Are there going to be some intensive training for the students as well?
Yes. Principal Herbert and I are working, working that out. I would also say that some of the questions that were raised in, in the survey are questions that we will be answering and we will be putting information on our web portal that will answer, will answer some of the questions. And I also wanted to add that we had a very successful professional development day yesterday with our, with our faculty. And I do understand the concerns that are expressed. The logistics are certainly, you know, you know, that's our greatest challenge, of course, is the logistics. But we've seen this done successfully in, in school districts just like Pots Grove, so. But we will be, we will be addressing those concerns and providing that support for, for students.
Awesome. Thank you, Chloe. And we want to make sure that your concerns are addressed. So if it's possible, you can forward to Dr. Ziegler maybe just the bullet points so that we make sure that we can answer all your questions and attend to students' concerns. Okay? Thank you so much. And moving on to committee reports. Policy?
I motion that we accept the minutes of the policy committee meeting that was held on September 23rd, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Number two, academic affairs?
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes from the academic affairs committee that was held October 7th, from 7:30 to 9:00.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three, co-curricular activities?
I'll motion that we accept the minutes from the co-curricular activities committee meeting held on October 7th, 2014.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Receiving of the accounts for audit, I'm going to fill in for Patty tonight. I move that we accept the high school accounts, middle school, and cafeteria accounts as presented. Motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $5,165,718.30 for September 2014 as presented.
Second.
Motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I move that we approve the treasurer's report for September 2014 as presented and file it for audit. Motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any new business?
I don't know. I guess this qualifies as new business. I just wanted to, there was an article actually in the Santa Toca Post about one of our teachers here at Lowers, efforts to raise funds, crowdsourced funds, I believe the term is, for a science project. It was Ms. Geist, who also happens to be my son's teacher. And she raised $711 to do a really cool project that involves bringing in some live animals and forming an ecosystem. And I just think it was a wonderful example of her initiative combined with the community stepping up to raise the funds. And I just wanted to compliment her and the administration here for, for allowing this to happen. And I know my son and everybody in his classroom are going to benefit. And I hope to see more of these types of initiatives in the days and years to come.
Any other new business? Just in our packets, we had, and I'm sure you might have seen on Facebook or in the news about our Wednesday, October 8th, Pots Grove senior Bernard, stay art? Bert Steyer, okay. Was selection to the U.S. Army All-American Marching Band, which is an awesome achievement. And just goes to show you that the investment into our, our arts program and music program here at Pots Grove is paying off. So if you see Bert, Bert, or see him anywhere, please congratulate him and thank him for representing Pots Grove well. Any other new business? Answers to previous inquiries, I don't believe we had any. And with that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.